Take their seats and we'll get started in a minute. And thank you for standing by.
Good evening and welcome to the March 19th, 2020 school committee meeting. This evening, we are talking to you from our Zoom meeting where all of our committee members are on, are on our Zoom application. It is 7:05, I'm calling this meeting to order and members-
Hey Kate, is there any way to like delete out our chat stuff or no?
Everybody is-
Oh Stacy, unmute.
I'm unmute, oh my god. Good evening and welcome to our March 19th, 2020 school committee meeting. My apologies for the delay, we are coming to you live from our homes and remote locations. It is 7:06 and the committee members are all getting adjusted at home here with us. Pursuant to the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's emergency order dated March 16th, 2020, the Holliston School Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the school webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the Governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I'm asking that all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. Can you all give me a thumbs up if you can hear me okay? When your name is called, please unmute your microphone, state here or present and then remute your microphone. So I'm calling roll call attendance. Ms. Hanstead.
Ann-Louise Hanstead, present.
Mrs. Listevnik.
Cynthia Listevnik, present.
Mr. Morton.
Andrew Morton, present.
Ms. Naborski.
Present.
Ms. Shaughnessy.
Shaughnessy, present.
Mrs. Rafi, Stacy Rafi, present. Ms. Koshen will be with us shortly. Dr. Brad Jackson.
Here.
Dr. Peter Battello.
Here.
Mr. Wonderful Budget Guy Keith Burdette. Okay. So I've read to you the Governor's order, we pick a full time. Now we need to formally vote to utilize remote participation. In accordance with the open meeting law, I will entertain a motion to utilize remote participation for this meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved. Taken by Cynthia.
Ann-Louise moved it.
Moved by Ann-Louise Hanstead, seconded by Cynthia. We need to roll call vote. Ms. Hanstead.
Yes.
Ms. Naborski.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik.
Yes.
Mrs. Shaughnessy, uh Ms. Shaughnessy, sorry. And Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Mrs. Rafi, yes. So for our audience again this evening, my apologies, we need to roll call, vote each motion this evening. Okay. First up on our agenda, our meeting minutes from February 27th, regular session. Are there any questions or comments? Just raise your hand. None. Is there a motion to approve the February 27th, 2020, regular session meeting minutes?
Moved by Cynthia.
Second by Dawn.
Moved by Cynthia Listevnik, seconded by John Naborski. Roll call vote, Ms. Hanstead.
Yes.
Ms. Naborski.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik.
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
And Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Mrs. Rafi, yes. March 5th, regular session meeting minutes. Are there any questions or updates? Okay, is there a motion to approve March 5th, 2020, regular session meeting minutes?
Moved by Dawn.
Seconded by Cynthia.
Moved by John Naborski, seconded by Cynthia Listevnik. Roll call vote, Ms. Hanstead.
Yes.
Ms. Naborski.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik.
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Ms. Koshen.
Yes.
Mrs. Rafi, yes. Thank you. Okay, we are going to begin with an FY21 budget overview. Ann-Louise, do you want to start off?
Uh, yes. Um, on Tuesday evening of this week, the school committee presented their recommended budget, which we approved on February 26th unanimously as a committee. And so we presented that to the finance committee in detail. And by the way, those materials, they aren't already, will be posted both on the town website as well as on the school committee website. So you will have access to them. I'm going to give a quick summary of this, but it's really important to note that the budget that we voted on as a committee on February 26th was done prior to, certainly prior to the shutdown of Holliston Public Schools for three weeks for the coronavirus and very much before any announcements at the federal or state level with respect to the current situation. So much has changed since then. But having said that, it was a very productive conversation with the finance committee. We were able to share with them each of the positions and/or programs that we are looking to fund. The overall, I'm just going to focus on the top numbers and just procedurally, I mean, I can pull up the one slide or should I just go over the numbers? If my, or are you connected, you want to pull up the front slide? I didn't plan on doing that, but for the community. I was gonna, it's like the first slide after the executive summary.
Just go high level, Ann-Louise.
Okay. Okay, no problem. Okay, so the FY20 budget, the one that we're in right now, the appropriation amount for that was $34,947,263. The recommendations from the school committee fall into two buckets. If we look at everything we're doing today and what those same activities and staff levels, et cetera, will cost us a year from now, that cost, we are projecting to increase at at around $949,920. That represents a 2.72% increase in the current budget and it's a it's what we call the run rate budget. It's just our current run rate, if you will. In addition to that, we recommended a number of positions and programs that we felt were essential to the districts. Health and wellbeing is sort of the best way to describe that. If anyone is interested in the detail of that, they should take a look at the February 26th live recording of the school committee meeting where we voted and approved this budget and/or Tuesday night's presentation to the finance committee where you can find detail on it. But those two buckets of initiatives, expenses would bring the FY21 budget to $36,598,807. So the overall recommended increase is just about 1.6 million or 4.73%. That's separate from the capital, which we recommended an increase of just over a million dollars at $1,018,086. And that covers some, a couple of major items, including renovating the committee infield, which was half a million dollars. And then the remainder really are primarily technology-related expenses. Made a very good conversation with the finance committee on all of these items. So again, I would encourage you to take a look at the recording from Tuesday evening on this. I think at this point in time, the question for this committee is where do we go from here? This budget was contemplated in a very different economic environment and I'd like to encourage some dialogue and discussion around this. I think we have a responsibility to the community to revise this recommendation. We have not had an opportunity to meet as a budget subcommittee since this recommendation was provided. So we don't have a specific refinement to recommend to you. So I'd like to encourage some dialogue and maybe we can collectively then discuss what we think the right thing to do here is.
Thank you, Ann-Louise, and I agree with you about some discussion about next steps. But I do wonder if it's preliminary for us as a committee to discuss it? And I'm wondering if it would be more productive to have the budget subcommittee meet? I think you have a meeting on Monday?
We have, well, I'm hopeful we're going to have a liaison meeting with the finance committee and yes, then that would require us to post as a subcommittee and we'll have an opportunity then to discuss what to do and where to go from here. And I'm happy to do that. I just wanted to make sure that we provided an opportunity for the committee at large to give us some input that we can contemplate and that that's always helpful when the subcommittee is meeting to figure out, okay, how do we reshape things?
I agree. I just wonder if we might have more information in a couple of days? This is such a
Yeah.
uncertain fluid situation. I'd hate to give you an opinion tonight and then it change on Tuesday.
Yeah. And we have no obligation to vote this thing tonight or re-vote it. Absolutely not. In fact, I would suggest that the likelihood that town meeting will be delayed by 30 days is very high right now. And right now, the finance committee and the select board frankly have priorities that are much more urgent related to managing the safety of the community. So I don't think that's a problem and that does give us some time to reevaluate this.
Okay. Does anyone have any initial thoughts for it at the moment? Joan.
I think I think it's premature to talk, for even the budget subcommittee to meet. We have no idea what the next month is going to hold. And until we have guidance from the universe, the federal government, the state government and town hall, any discussions we have about contingency planning or what we might put forward is premature and we don't know what town meeting is going to be, we don't know what's happening. For us to go forward in any way is, to me, a waste of time because we just have to come back and revise it when we have more information.
Our purposes, Joan, for getting together Monday, they're sort of multi-level. One part of this is to get together an executive session with them to share, now that we've talked as a committee, where we stand in negotiations, which is customary. So that's one purpose of that. And frankly, the other purpose is we just need to stay in close contact with them. It may be nothing more than a learning session where we're hearing from them what they know and it's changing every day. So we will be convening, but it doesn't necessarily translate into anything specific with respect to the budget.
I would ask, Ann-Louise, could update the committee when you get a meeting time for the subcommittee? I'm asking committee members to email Ann-Louise directly with any questions or suggestions, recommendations, just to Ann-Louise only. She will share it with the budget subcommittee and then we can reconnect about this in our next meeting. Thumbs up if that's okay for everyone? Great. All right, thank you. Brad, update on the school start times?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I, well, I know it's not, it's a little out of order, but because of we want to spend some time talking about the COVID-19 issues and some of the implications that are going along with that. And that's the major topic of conversation for tonight. One of the, one of the issues I wanted to bring to your attention as it relates to the school start times implementation plan is that I am uncertain that at this point in time, if I am going to be able to do the impact study that we had, that I had proposed to you several weeks ago. The plan, as you know, was to assess students at the high school, middle school, and Miller for items such as worry, stress and anxiety, depression, depression, sleep habits, homework habits and attendance, and to do all of those in the month of March. I would argue at this point in time, considering the fact that our schools are closed, that our, first of all, we have our plans to administer, to seek that data through a survey that was going to be done through DSB or through advisories at the middle school and/or in homerooms at Miller. That structure does not exist anymore so that we can't properly set the tone and the understanding of what the purpose of the survey is for, which is a high level of concern for people at the, at Miller School. And secondarily, I would offer that the validity of any data we receive right now around the issues of worry and stress and anxiety and depression is completely skewed by the current situation. So I would argue that this data, even if I could collect it, would be uncomparable to March of next year. So I, I am, I think it is, at this point in time, my plan is to put the, the plan for an impact study aside and wait, wait for this, this larger issue to work itself out to the point where we could collect valid data. There is a possibility, however, that the, was the end result of that may be that there is no, there will be no impact study as we describe it, as we pictured it in, in the proposal that I made back in February, that collecting the data this year may end up being impossible. Am I coming through all right? I'm getting some internet challenges at my end. So with that, I will yield the floor for questions.
Please, Tom. There's so many moving parts right now, it's hard to even know where to go with this. But I do just want to make sure that we can revisit this topic at our next meeting. I can't even, I can't even wrap my head around it. I mean, I don't know that there, I can't think of a solution to this right now. But I would just like to be able to come back and revisit this and talk about it some more whenever our next meeting is. That's it. I got, I, I don't have any ideas how to, how to solve with this, but it seems like a pretty big, it's a big problem because, you know, the whole idea was to measure, to get some idea of how well things were working or weren't working. And this is kind of the worst case scenario. But yeah, if we could just revisit this at our next meeting, I think that would be a good idea.
I think, oh, sorry.
Cynthia had her hand up for, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Hi, I was just going to say that, um, I don't, like Brad said, I'm not sure that there's any way for us to get data that would be in any way accurate given the current situation that we're all facing right now. Any data that we have would be just, it's, it's just, there's too many confounding variables now. We can't just have a study, be able to do an impact study about a before and after. So like, what are we talking about, before the pandemic versus after the pandemic? I think it's a much broader issue that we need to focus on. So I'm not, that doesn't mean that I don't think that we're going to be concerned about tracking and seeing how kids are doing. But right now, if there's no way for us to collect before data, then we can't collect before data. Period.
Ann-Louise?
I think you're right. It's, you know, it'd be pretty impossible to collect before data. But if I recall, some of the things you were going to look at, Brad, were things that exist, like the youth risk survey, things like that. I mean, it's, it's not quite the foundation we were looking for. But perhaps what we can do, and we can, we don't have to brainstorm this all right now. I have some thoughts on how this might work, is do a couple of different points throughout next year. Because I think in the beginning, you know, things are always a little bit crazy. But as students and families settle in, we may even see over the course of next year that some normalcy begins to take place and stress gets reduced. And I'm making some grand assumptions that, you know, things are going to go back to normal. But do you know what I'm saying? Like there may be a way just to do some pulse surveys, you know, beginning, middle and end of next year, just to kind of see how that looks. It's more of an after, I appreciate that. But what it might do is let us see how things look as the community settles into a new schedule.
Dawn?
I agree that it would be challenging and I don't see a way to do an impact study at this moment. But everything's changed a lot in the last week. I would, I would say, keep it as an agenda item. Let's all think about it when we have a little more space and time. Maybe we'll think of something. But I think it's unlikely that it would happen. But let's give us another two weeks to just consider it and keep it on the agenda for the next meeting.
And let's be clear, student, uh, school start times will always be on the agenda for the rest of the year. So we've got it. Thank you, Brad. Brad, back to you about Student Opportunity Act.
Thank you. Included in your packet is a copy of the, do you hear me? Included in the, in your packet is a copy of the recommendation I made some time ago to designate the use of Student Opportunity Act funds for the purpose of supporting the implementation of the new K-5 ELA curriculum. There is a process in the state of Massachusetts as part of the Student Opportunity Act to, to follow, that we have followed. I introduced, first introduced the topic to the committee at your February 27th meeting and gave the public notice that they had an opportunity to provide feedback to the committee and to, and to me regarding my recommendations. We revisited my recommendation at your March 5th meeting where the committee, or neither the committee nor the community offered any feedback on my recommendation. So tonight, I am recommending that the school committee approve my recommendation that Holliston use its additional Chapter 78 to support the implementation of the new K-5 ELA curriculum in FY21.
Is there a motion?
Moved by Cynthia.
Second by Dawn.
By Cynthia Listevnik, seconded by John Naborski. Is there any, are there any questions before we roll call vote? Okay, Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Mrs. Rafi, yes. Thank you. We're going to move right into new business. Dr. Jackson is going to give us a status report on COVID-19 and how it is affecting our Holliston public school family.
Well, I'm going to try to be a little more narrow than that because it's to try to keep this to a minimum. We've been communicating almost daily with parents in the Holliston Public Schools. But in terms of background, I did want to share that on Thursday, March 12th, I made the decision to close the Holliston Public Schools effective Friday, March 13th, and for the week of March 16th through 20th as a preventative measure to spread the potential, to impact the potential spread of COVID-19 throughout the town of Holliston. On Sunday, March 15th, Governor Baker ordered all pre-K to 12 public schools in Massachusetts closed through March, through April 6th, 2020. So as a result, the Holliston Public Schools, as you are all aware, are now closed through April 6th, 2020. Tonight, I want to update the committee and the community on three aspects of that closure. The first is to request the committee to authorize the expenditure of unbudgeted funds to implement the continuity of learning plan that we've developed. The second is to update you on staff and to provide some staff updates on the closure. And the third is to provide a general update on the enhanced learning opportunities that phase that we will begin implementation on Monday, March 20th. So my first request, my single request tonight, the other two will be reporting out and then taking questions. As a result of our development of a plan to maintain contact with our students and to, to impact, to try to minimize and eliminate the, any regression that would take place through the closure period, we conducted an assessment, a needs assessment on the part of our students for technology at home. And as a result of that needs assessment, we have been distributing Chromebooks and Touch, Chromebook touches to students in grades K to 2 and 3 to 5 over the past several days. In addition, and that will go on, today's Thursday, March 19th, that will go, that will also go on on Friday, March 20th, from 9:00 to 12:00 at the Miller Elementary School. And Saturday, March 12th, from 9:00 to 12:00 at Miller. Students in grades 6 through 12 will be using their school-supplied Chromebooks for these purposes. I notified the committee that I was expecting a shortfall of, of Chromebooks for the purposes of redistribution. This is brought about for a couple of reasons. First of all, we have a two-to-one Chromebook plan at the elementary school. So we do not have enough Chromebooks to, in, in use. Um, so we do not have enough Chromebooks to, um, in, in, in use, even though we have some spares. Um, and we actually have also received a donation of 80 Chromebooks, um, 50 of which you have already, uh, approved, uh, the receipt of. Um, and 30, frankly, I was supposed to bring to you tonight, and it slipped my mind. So I will get that to you at the next meeting. Um, but, um, we are also finding, um, that some of our older Chromebooks that our faculty have, um, are, are struggling to, um, be able to do things like you're seeing here. These multimedia type of multi-student or multi-staff, um, Zoom meetings, um, that are essentially going to be a, an essential component of some of the work we're going to be doing with students over the course of the, of the shutdown period. So we're having to upgrade some of our staff, uh, staff Chromebooks that have four and five-year-old Chromebooks to some of, uh, to newer Chromebooks as well. As a result, we are, we are predicting that we are about 75 Chromebooks short. Um, my original email, my original memo to you predicted we would be 25 Chromebooks short. We've since upgraded that to 75, um, as a result of the news that we've, uh, been learning over the course of the past several days. Uh, two, two issues have changed that. The first is, as I mentioned, the difficulty we're having with the, uh, some of the older Chromebooks and accessing some of, um, this type of technology, even in the Google Classroom realm. Um, and the second is that the school committee earlier tonight authorized, um, me to, uh, continue the employment of, uh, our parent professionals during the school closure period. Um, and we will require, we will need to distribute some Chromebooks to them, uh, so that they can do work from home as well. So we need 75 Chromebooks at a cost of $220 per unit, which is a total of $16,500. In addition, we need 175 units of Chromebook management software at $30 a unit, which is $5,250. The total, um, request that I'm asking the school committee to authorize me to, uh, purchase from, and I'm authorizing, that I'm seeking authorization, uh, tonight is for $21,750. Um, this information was provided, um, a little bit out of order, and I apologize for that. Um, but it was provided to the finance committee, um, as part of, uh, the budget subcommittee's, um, presentation to the finance committee. We wanted to update them at, uh, Anne-Louise's and Stacy's request on any fiscal impact, uh, that this closure was gonna cause. Um, and they took a, uh, an, I would call it an informal vote to, uh, to encourage and support the committee should you decide to, uh, make this purchase. I, um, there was, I've had some considerable concerns that, um, even if you voted this, um, that we may have some challenges in, in getting these, um, units. Um, as a result of that, I, um, had, um, our, um, Director of Technology and Digital Learning, Dan McLeod, contact vendors. And we did find a vendor, um, who can provide us on the state bid list with the Chromebooks we require with a delivery of Monday. So I have placed a purchase order that if the school committee tonight decides that I, uh, decides not to authorize the expenditure of these funds, that I can cancel tomorrow. But I wanted to get in line because, um, these are getting to be hard items to find, particularly as schools like ours are scrambling to prepare, um, for, you know, to react to this school closure in very short order. So I wanted to be totally transparent with you. I have placed an order, um, that I can cancel tomorrow, um, with no penalty. But I did place the order to secure our place in line for Monday delivery, which to me is the best-case scenario. So my request, before I proceed with the rest of my report on, uh, COVID-19 and the school shutdown, my request is that the school committee authorize the superintendent of schools to, to purchase 100, excuse me, 75 Chromebooks and 175 units of, um, Chromebook management software for a total unbudgeted, uh, purchase of $21,750.
So moved by Anne-Louise?
Seconded by Dawn.
Seconded by John Naborsky. Question, Andy?
No questions.
Lisa?
Um, can we talk a little bit first about what they're gonna use the Chromebooks for? Cause I think there's been, I think there's been some confusion. I've heard some questions about the idea of enrichment versus actually following the curriculum. So I want to understand before we vote on this, what they're gonna be using the Chromebooks for.
Sure. Well, that's the, that's the third part of my, uh, presentation, but I'll, I'll move to that. Then we can, uh, move back to the vote or not. Um, the, um, the, um, since the closure, um, notice was provided, the administrators, building administrators, central office administrators, department heads, curriculum specialists, um, and, um, other leaders, uh, in the Holliston Public Schools have been working, no exaggeration, 12 hours a day, uh, seven days a week to put together a plan for, um, for, um, to maintain connectivity and educational services to the best of our ability to our, um, to our students during the shutdown period. We, uh, that plan was informed by advice that was issued by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education during the middle part of the week that advised us that all plans must, um, any plan that is, um, executed must, um, if it, if it, if it involves re- uh, providing a free and appropriate public education to one student, then you must provide a free and appropriate public education to all students. And, um, the, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has indicated that they're, they're, um, they have concluded, uh, that distance learning does not, um, there is no way through distance learning to provide a free and appropriate public education to student, to cer- to students, to all students. That there are certain students who have certain, um, special needs that cannot be served, that those needs cannot be served through distance learning. So as a result, if you can't provide, uh, uh, free and appropriate publication to all, then you cannot provide it to any. And that is why districts across Massachusetts are, um, choosing to, uh, instead offer enhanced learning opportunities to students that don't advance, um, learning beyond the current curric- the level of curriculum, but helps to deepen understanding of curriculum items that have already, um, been taught, to help reinforce skills that are being taught and have been taught and will continue to be taught, and to, um, offer opportunities for students to explore new things and to, uh, develop new understandings of things that interest them. Um, and that is, um, the plan that we have put together. That is the plan that, um, is, um, we've been directed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, um, is the maximum plan that we can offer during a school closure. Um, and, um, that is, um, and we are, um, basically working to, um, execute that plan at the highest level possible. Um, and at the quality, um, of, of service that Holliston expects. Um, and that is, and those, um, Chromebooks are going to be in the hands of teachers and parent professionals to do two things. One, to maintain connectivity with students, um, so that they can reach out and have individual, one-on-one, or group conversations about things that they're reading, about, um, things that they're studying together, to maintain connectivity and to maintain, uh, a cohesiveness to their instruction and, um, some structure around school. Um, and, um, and those, that's, uh, and that is the use of the, um, the, the, uh, systems that we're requesting tonight. Don't shoot the messenger.
Dawn?
Okay, um, I am deeply disappointed that we would not be able to move forward with the current curriculum. And what I would like to know is, so this directive, to be clear, is coming from DESI. It's coming from the Commissioner of Education and DESI, and not something that Holliston Public Schools is doing independent of the other schools in the Commonwealth. Is that correct? And then I have a couple of follow-up questions.
That is correct.
Okay. Do we have any information on whether that same directive will change? Should the school closure go beyond April 7th? Is there anything, any kind of consideration of a different plan for implementation after April 7th? Where we will be able to move our students forward in the curriculum after April 7th?
Well, I, first of all, the, the short answer to your question is no. But I also want to, uh, challenge a little bit of the wording you're using because moving students ahead in the curriculum doesn't, there's a difference between acquiring new skills and sharpening and deepening skills versus moving things along in the curriculum. So, um, it doesn't necessarily mean that new learning is not gonna take place or deeper learning is not gonna take place. But it is not going, but the scope and sequence may or may not, will not be, um, followed as it would in traditional, in traditional school. The other thing, and I'm not trying to defend the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, but, um, it is a, it is a fact that, um, right now, we will not have 180 days of school in Holliston. We will have at most 169 instructional days. These next 11 days are not part of that 169 days. So every student in Massachusetts will have 169-day school year. Plus or minus, some may have had a couple more snow days, so they may actually have a few less days. So, um, the, this is not, this is, um, this is going to be a shorter school year than any other year that our students will have. And, um, we, unfortunately, given this directive, which, um, stems from the federal requirements to provide free and appropriate public education for all students, um, is, um, a, um, you know, is a, is a reality for towns, uh, across Massachusetts.
Okay. And again, I'm not trying to shoot the messenger. I just want to make sure that the public understands this is coming from DESI and that they're very clear that A, it's not, we're not, it's not new curriculum. B, that kids are not being graded and these, these, um, projects or assignments are not mandatory and that we communicate that well to the public. Is it my, I guess it's my, oh, sorry.
Nope.
My, my understanding then is that if we were to, if, if the schools in Massachusetts were to, um, move forward with new curriculum, that would have to come from the legislatures, the legislation here? Is that, or the Commissioner of Education and DESI would have to change their position? And then also, I'm aware of other states who are also under the same federal mandates for IEP, 504, other issues that are going forward with curriculum as they take on this unprecedented tide. So I just, I'm not, I, I understand this is coming from DESI, but I want to be clear. If we are going to change this, does it have to come, um, from our state legislature?
Um, I don't know how I can answer that question. I, I take directives from the, um, from the, um, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Dawn, I know you know as a lawyer that there are standards that, um, that are applied when making, um, decisions. I can tell you historically that Massachusetts has had among the, probably the highest standard for FAP, we call it FAP, for in-appropriate public education, has always applied the highest standard to FAP of any, um, state in the United States. Um, and as a result, um, our student, all of our students have benefited from that over the years. Um, but, um, perhaps that, 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 um, standard that they're applying to measure what they consider to be a free and appropriate public education may differ than the, the standard that other states are applying. Um, so I, I don't, I don't, I can't really provide you any advice as to whether this is a leg- there's a legislative, um, um, response to this. Um, it's, it's a decision that's made through, it's an advisory that's provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which is part of the executive branch.
Thank you.
Joan and then Anne-Louise?
I have a question, um, and, and two very quick comments. One is, Brad, would you be so kind as to send the school committee a copy of that directive from DESE? Um, and the other one is, I, I'm going to suggest two things. One, let Brad finish what he has to say before we all jump on him with questions. And two, um, could we keep the, um, requirement portion of the program away from the kids? Just, let's just let them, just let them think it's mandatory. You know, maybe we can write it in cursive and they won't know. My point is that I don't want my kids to know that this isn't necessary. I, I want the full power of, of the school that, whatever, never mind. I was trying to be funny, never mind.
Anne-Louise?
Um, yeah, so, look, this is such a tough thing. I think I understand the FAP standard, and I'm sure that is the lens through which DESI came up with this policy. But I'm also pretty sure that when th- those standards were developed, no one was envisioning a pandemic, and we don't know how long this will go on. And I would like to suggest that this is more of educational triage, where we've got to do the most that we can for as many students as we can and, and then find mitigating approaches for those students for whom we can't serve in exactly the same way. And I don't know what those creative approaches are, so that we can raise everybody up and move them forward. Um, I don't know if this is a follow-up for, you know, our committee with our, um, representatives, excuse me. Something in my throat, um, or what have you. And we can talk about what those potential next steps are. Cause I just think this is a different situation. Um, Dawn is right. I believe the state of Washington has managed to go to enable K through 12, um, distance learning for some districts, and it won't be universal across all. But again, I think we've got to do what we can for as many as we can. Um, moving on from that, I just want to say this. So the communication came out today, um, at least we received the communication today in my household for the high school. And, um, for students enrolled in AP courses, the message that was given is that, um, their grades as of term three will be their grade for the year. You know, that will comprise their grade for the year. Um, not just for AP courses, but I think for the high school students in general. Um, but for students who are preparing to take AP exams, there is still curriculum to be taught, and, and that's the challenge, to prepare them for those exams. So the teachers have been very clear that they can't make it required. So technically, they're optional, but those students should be taking it seriously because there's probably two or three or four chapters left in whatever topic they're pursuing. And those, um, those are critical to them completing the curriculum and being prepared for those advanced placement exams. And the College Board has offered, um, the opportunity up or is planning to offer the opportunity up for these students to take their AP exams online and at home, multiple choice only. Um, so I can't emphasize enough- So I can't emphasize enough to families that maybe in that particular situation, this is your student's opportunity to potentially earn college credit for these courses and it should be taken seriously. And the teachers are taking it seriously and doing the best that they can. Um, so Joan is right. The word optional is one that is required to be used, but they are doing the best that they can to follow the curriculum that is available.
And I, uh, I, if I could, just to follow up on that, I, um, I, uh, I have made it very clear to the teachers, um, and the administrators in Holliston that, um, this is not a, um, exercise in finding the lowest common denominator. This is an exercise in finding the highest common denominator. And, um, there are, there are opportunities here to provide extraordinary learning opportunities for students. And I respectfully ask the committee and the community to reserve judgment until they've had a chance to see what, what these teachers are offering. Um, I, um, I, when the questions are over and before I ask for the motion on the money, I did, I, I do want to read, um, the last paragraph that I wrote to parents yesterday about, um, these, uh, these learning opportunities so that, um, we could, um, because I tried to put them into perspective and stress how important I thought they were and the value that I know they'll have.
Dawn. And I didn't in any way mean to, uh, suggest that what the teachers will put together won't be extraordinary and will meet our expectations. I am concerned if this closure goes beyond three weeks, it goes to two months or three months or wherever it goes, that there is a substantial amount of the curriculum that won't be covered if that occurs. So we do need to think about, uh, I guess folks at home, I'd like you to think about, um, advocating on behalf. But I know that given the circumstances and DESI's mandate to our public schools, that the teachers have put together the best program, um, for them. Can I just, I, I did have one additional question. I understand there won't be grades or mandatory, um, assignments, but will, will the students receive feedback on work they do?
That is, we have encouraged staff to, to stay connected and provide feedback to students on their work, yes.
I just, um, wanted to say that I thank you so much for coming up with these great plans, Brad. Um, I think it's really important for the kids to have some consistency in a time of great uncertainty. That being said, I think that maybe the broader question is for us to look at sort of the Maslow's hierarchy of needs here. And although I, this is really, it is important for the kids to have something consistent. I think that we also have to take into consideration that there's families who are losing their jobs or potentially could be losing their homes, are food insecure. Um, there's a number of other issues that are also going on in the midst of trying to like master the curriculum. So I just want everybody to keep that in mind as well, that all individuals are not, may not be able to access it to the level of as if they were in school or to their best selves right now, like given the stress and anxiety that everyone is under right now. Thank you.
Okay, Louis, flip your, uh, oh, Joan.
Sorry, I'm, I'm wondering, Brad, if you could share with the committee and the community, your, your communication plan, uh, going forward? Like, will there be, uh, uh, something on a website, an interactive FAQ? Is this just a general, obviously, first of all, the community needs to understand that Brad Jackson has been working 16 hours a day since this started. And, and I don't think he has slept at all. Um, this has weighed heavily on him. This, he is, he is taking it, um, this is taking a personal toll on, on, on him. And he is not only our superintendent, he's a president of the Mass, the Mass, Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. Um, and that is a role, a hat he has to put on every now and then. Um, but his first priority is the, is Holliston Public Schools. And, um, give him a break, give him a minute to breathe. Um, but we do want your vision of, of, um, or any insight you have about a communication plan, um, sort of as we navigate through this.
Sure, and thank you for that question and I appreciate the support. And I know, and I frankly appreciate the support of everyone here tonight. You all have been incredibly supportive of me and all of the administrative team as we've been trying to deal and you have been trying to deal with these, these, uh, very, very unpredictable times. And I frankly am 100% confident that we will look back on these times and think that they, this was Holliston Public Schools at its finest. And I am 100% convinced that we will all be able to do that. Um, in terms of communication, it, it, my, the communication plan kind of sits on top of an overall plan that I've been using since day one, which is essentially using a triage model of, um, trying to address this issue. And that me, and a triage model basically uses the concept of do I have to make a decision now? And what are the most important decisions in terms of life, safety, et cetera? So, uh, I have been receiving a lot of questions that I have, that aren't important, that, let me rephrase that, that aren't questions that need to be answered today to do what we have to do tomorrow. So I have been, um, delaying answering some of those questions for two reasons. A, because we don't have the answers. And B, because I've been focusing on putting together a short-term plan. So this past, so last week, the plan was, we're getting no direction from the state of Massachusetts. What the heck is Holliston Public Schools going to do? And as Ann-Louise mentioned in another meeting, I spent a 14-hour meeting, uh, on Thursday with, uh, two PCs in front of me, one that was working on the meeting in front of us and the other was communicating with superintendents across the state about what are we going to do about closing school? Because the, um, because the state had been silent on it. So we made the decision to close school and then we turned to, okay, what are we going to do, um, once the snow days run out? And that is the plan that we're talking about today. The plan that is, um, that is, um, that is, uh, will be executed Monday morning. Once that is done, then we will start turning our attention to some of the details and planning frankly for beyond the April 6th date either. How are we going to decide whether we're going to return? How, if the governor makes that decision, that's still, I still have the opportunity to make an independent decision for the Holliston Public Schools. If, um, by, by consulting with the, uh, Department of Public Health and/or the local board of health. What are the criteria for that decision? And, um, and, um, what happens if we don't return on April 6th? How are we going to extend our plan? And what are the implications, which is the part we're going to actually turn to next? What are the implications of, um, a more extended, um, closure? And so, and that's where a lot of the questions that, um, are still unanswered are coming from. Um, many, um, many of our, uh, at the high school, we have seniors, uh, who, um, have, um, uh, plans and are, are trying to formulate plans. Uh, we have things like, uh, senior events, we have graduation, we have graduation requirements. We have students who, um, are required to take four years of English and, um, maybe, um, a third of the way through their English in their senior year. Um, these are some issues that all are going to have to be addressed moving forward if the closure extends beyond April 4th. So my, my communications plan is a very long answer to a short question, but my communication plan dovetails with the, with the, um, problem-solving approach that we've brought to this whole situation, which basically means I will, I'm trying to communicate one step ahead. So yesterday, um, I distributed, I sent an email to all the families. It said, this is, uh, this is the enhanced learning, um, opportunities plan that we're going to provide. You're going to get communication from your school principals by Saturday. Um, and you're going to, and your teachers, students, um, are going to hear communications from their teachers on Monday. Today, uh, Thursday and tomorrow, Friday, the teachers are, uh, participating in virtual professional development to finalize those plans as to what the content is going to look like. The next step will be to take things like the, uh, frequency, frequent asked questions document that the school committee's been developing based on questions that they've been asked by the public. Um, and, um, and turning our attention, turning my attention to that. My goal is by the end of next week, um, I think people are getting tired of long, um, well, well-written but too long emails from me. Um, so I'm actually thinking of taking the FAQs and, um, doing a more, um, video presentation, basically interviewing myself or having somebody interview me with the FAQs, um, so that I can have a conversation and post it on the web. So, um, we are trying to keep, continue to communicate. At this point in time, communication with parents and students is going to start to push down to the teacher level while the administration goes back into planning mode for the period of April 6th and beyond.
I confess I haven't had five minutes to go through those FAQs and I will. I think, you know, every, every single building has a whole different set of concerns for parents and families. And I would just ask everyone to just be patient. These communications are coming out over the next few days. As I'm sitting here, I am getting, like, my text messages are lighting up from high school parents who are worried about graduation requirements, about getting credit for courses, et cetera, et cetera. And those are such understandable concerns. Um, just give our administration the room over the next few days to get this information out to you. It's, it's actually kind of emerging a little bit more organically from the teachers who are trying to get the information to students. Um, but not, it's not always, you know, not every teacher has communicated the same way, et cetera. So just understand this stuff is coming and it will be sorted out.
And it is important to remember that the officially, uh, the schools are closed through April 6th. As I said, I'm planning for the potential that that will extend. Um, and, but right now, the facts are that the schools are closed through April 6th.
Brad, did you want to move forward with your request for the funding? Or do you want to keep going with your update?
This essentially completes my update.
Joan.
Brad, as I, um, as I said earlier, I, I don't want to pressure you or anything, but one of the, one of the, the constants we're getting is the impact on IEPs. And I'm not going to ask you to comment on that tonight. Um, but I will tell you that that is a theme that, um, we are hearing quite a bit. So in your upcoming communications, in the contemplation of IEPs and services, if you could keep that in the back of your mind as a priority, that would be appreciated.
Thank you. Um, I do know that, um, Meg Cameri, our Director of Student Services, has written an email to every parent, um, who has a child on an IEP, explaining the state regulations and, um, explaining, um, what, uh, that services, um, are not available during the time of school closure. Um, and that is, um, also, um, although teachers, special educators, uh, paraprofessionals, um, school psychologists will be available to reach out and to interact with students. Um, and to, but the, um, the formal delivery of the service grid on the IEP does not take place on days that schools are not in session and school is not in session during these enhanced learning days. And that ultimately is the flip side of this FAP issue. Um, and that is, um, that in a nutshell is the whole, that is the whole, is the flip side of that issue.
Stacy, you're on mute.
Dawn, go ahead.
Um, Brad, I, I had a question. You, you mentioned the school psychologists will be available. Um, are guidance and the school psychologists going to be available to the children for, um, talks, video conferences? Do you have, can you let us know a little bit about what that's going to look like?
Sure. Um, guide, all of, all of our school employees are working from home. They all have, um, they all have, um, um, well, assuming you give me the 75 more, they all have, um, access to adequate equipment to communicate with students and to stay connected with students. Some of our school psychologists, guidance counselors have caseloads. Um, I know that guidance counselors at the high school, for example, actually during the past week have been in touch with many of their seniors to kind of stay connected with them about some of their college issues. Um, you know, so even when, um, during the snow day period, I know that guidance has been connected to, to students like that. We, uh, also just, um, for a, um, so you know, the, um, the Holliston Police Department, the Holliston, Holliston Youth and Family Services, um, and, um, and my senior administration team are going to be meeting, um, virtually once to twice a week to go over, uh, family, um, issues and crises that may be, that may be ongoing in the community. Um, we do expect with the isolation and with the, um, uh, with the confinement that some families are feeling, there is going to be a, a significant uptick in mental health challenges that are felt in the community. There's already been an uptick in some, um, instances of domestic violence in, in, across Massachusetts uh, because of the confinement. So by communicating these things locally in Holliston, uh, we can make sure we are reaching out with our resources to families in need as well. Um, this is again, kind of the model of collaboration that we've built with these departments, that will continue to, uh, outreach with students. So whether we proactively reach out with some, to someone, who may not have been on our radar, um, but certainly guidance, school psychologists, um, and, um, our, um, school social workers, et cetera, will be, um, reaching out to their, uh, to the students they serve to check in and, um, and, uh, provide some guidance and support.
Ann-Louise, then Dawn, then Lisa.
I, I'm good, Stacy, I'm fine.
Okay, Dawn, then Lisa.
Uh, so one other follow-up, Brad. I think there's some deadlines for, um, high school seniors applying to scholarships, um, in-town scholarships, scholarships run by different organizations. Those are coming up, I think maybe just to make sure, oh, Ann-Louise, you have a?
Yeah, what I was going to say, um, Dawn, you just may not have seen it, but Guidance actually did send out an outstanding and very comprehensive email to students and parents. Um, and it talked, it did mention, um, access to Guidance and support from Guidance.
And it talked, it did mention access to Guidance and support from Guidance, and it took special care to talk to all the deadlines that both juniors and seniors are dealing with with respect to standardized exams, college applications, college decisions, et cetera. The decision for the timeline for submitting scholarship applications has been pushed out, and I'm trying to remember what date it was pushed out to. I believe it was, it's like mid-April, but check, check your email. And then the, they provided some excellent resources for students who can now are not in a position to actually go visit the colleges to which they have been accepted. Oh, April 13th, thank you, getting a text here. The scholarship deadline is now April 13th, so students have a little bit longer to submit those and they can get the Guidance packets. If they haven't gotten them yesterday and today, they have one more day tomorrow. Check your email, it's by alphabet, like 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. is A through H, and it goes on from there, but it's in the morning between 9:00 and noon. They're metering the number of kids that can go in at once to pick things up, but it is available online. And they provided other resources in this email for students who are trying to figure out what to do about choosing a college, including extended deadlines for financial aid commitments, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, my other question, Brad, is in your communications, we have a free and reduced lunch program. And it, it's my understanding people can, if circumstances change and jobs are lost or whatever, whatever might qualify them for that, they can continue to apply and they ought to be able to find that where on the school website? And is that something that you could continue to communicate to families too? How to apply for free and reduced lunch?
That's a good question. I, technically, free and reduced lunch only applies to when, when school is in session and when lunch is being served in the cafeteria. The, the lunch program that we're offering through Miller School is a no questions asked, families, families, not just children, in need lunch program that was communicated to the entire community that we intend to re-communicate weekly so that there's no qualifying event. It's families in need as families define it.
Thank you. Um, sorry if I missed the, I, you guys may have discussed this. Jack just lost a tooth, so I ran off for a second. But, so the question I had though, and apologies if this was answered already. We're not providing services in IEPs. Is that going to change? Is it possible that will change after April 6th, whatever, if we extend beyond that? Or are we saying we're not providing IEP services even if we're closed for the rest of the school year? And if we're not, I think I know the answer to this question, Brad, but if we're not, can you just explain why not?
The question, it kind of answers itself. When school is closed, we are not providing IEP services. And technically, school is closed. So the procedure that was in the letter that went out by the Director of Student Services is that students who may regress during the period of school closure will, there'll be a team meeting upon reopening of school to assess any regression and additional services will be added to the grid, the service delivery grid, to make up for that regression through the team process. But that, that is, those are the regulations. And so in this, in, in terms of special education, this is essentially summer without extended year services. And that, that is kind of, and it's not something frankly that I'm proud of. And I wish the state had a different position on this. However, there are, we do have to recognize that some of these services are, do require, you know, physical therapy cannot be done over the internet. So there are, and those, and special education services are seen, you know, as, as equivalent services. You can't give one with, you know, one, you qualify for one versus another. And so one-on-one tutoring or a one-to-one paraprofessional support for a social, for a... Now, those, those services just cannot be provided through this, 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 through this medium. And that hug that Mr. Morton just got can, can also not be provided through this media. Mic drop.
Uh, two questions. One, Brad, the, the explanation you just gave about the delivery of IEPs in summer, is that, I, I'm sure that is by, by virtue of some manner, a statute or something? If you could provide that again to the committee via email, that would be appreciated. It's nice to fall back on, on facts when you, and, and the law when you are trying to calm nerves. And the other question is, first of all, I applaud Holliston for not asking any questions. I, I work in a different school district and the child has to be present to pick up the grab and go. So kudos to Holliston for just no questions asked, just if you need it, come get it. And my question as a member of the school committee is the funding for that? Because you've described how the, our lunch program is, is funded from a revolving account. And while I applaud and, and would support 100% that action, I just need to ask the question, how are we paying for that?
I lost, I, my internet fizzled out a little bit there. If your question is how are we paying for food and staff?
We've already covered that. How are we, because we are not the, this no questions asked, if you need it, come get it policy, which I totally support and, and applaud. But as a school committee member, I, I have to ask the fiscally, the fiduciary question, how are we, how are we paying for that? Because free and reduced lunch is federally funded or subsidized anyway. So the question becomes, how are, how are we paying for that?
Well, Holliston right now does not qualify for federal reimbursement for any of these lunches because during the COVID-19 crisis, the federal government has only confirmed, has only told us that they will support communities that have 50% free or reduced lunch levels. So right now, we are funding it through a local charitable organization, a fraternal service organization, and, and a private foundation and a local restaurant are providing the funding for, for the raw materials. Poor choice of word, raw material, the food.
Thank you.
So perhaps if we could circle around, back around to the, to the request for the Chromebooks. My request was for authorization to spend a total of $21,750 on 75 Chromebooks and 175 units of Chromebook management software to implement the, the Enhanced Learning Opportunities Program.
I move. Moved by Dawn Naborsky, seconded by Joan Shaumacy, will call Ms. Handstad?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Listabnik?
Yes.
Ms. Shaumacy?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. Thank you. You have a question?
Yeah, before we leave this agenda item, can I bring up something related to the school closure? I just wanted to see if there was any interest in discussing some kind of resolution to, from the school committee, to ask the governor to issue a shelter-in-place order? And the reason I'm asking that is because other local and state officials have started to do that apparently. And I think it's...
Like, just walk behind me, just from the...
And so I think that it's something we should consider because we're going to an awful lot of trouble. Particularly Dr. Jackson and his administrative team are going to an awful lot of trouble. And this is a huge burden on families and children and all of us to be in the middle of this school closure. And I think that we're seeing the possibility that it might be all for naught if people don't start enforcing the social distancing. So I for one feel like it would be a good idea to add our voices to some sort of resolution or letter or however we want to put it, encouraging the governor to issue a shelter-in-place order for the state.
Squash into salad, is there a word?
Joan, you need to mute yourself.
Any questions or thoughts if on Lisa's request? Andy?
I, I support the idea in principle, but I'm concerned that we're getting a little bit outside of our lane here where there's an awful lot of Department of Public Health folks and others that have a lot more, one, information and two, expertise in this area that I think that our voice isn't one that would be as useful as some of those other voices. So I'm not, I'm not particularly comfortable with that. That's all.
Anyone else?
I would say maybe we just give it, give it a few days. I'm not, I'm not in disagreement with Andy. I kind of hope our community at least is thinking that way, but I certainly appreciate where you're coming from, Lisa. If, you know, if we, if we have a meeting next week, maybe that's what, what we ask for if this doesn't... Yeah, I don't know.
Cynthia?
I, I mean, I, I agree with Lisa in principle because I, I do think that you're right, that this closure, if we still have kids running around playing on committee and field or neighbors who are congregating on the corners and talking to each other, this kind of, the, the idea of social distancing that we're not actually doing, it'll all be for naught and we'll, we'll lose more and more and more time if we don't nip this in the bud and close everything down. That being said, I don't think we have any control over it, even as a school committee. I certainly think that lobbying Senator Spilka's office or Carolyn Dykema or the governor himself to say that we need to, we need firm decisive action right now. Otherwise, there's just, this is the only way for us to manage it right now. This is just triage. And so I support the idea, but I don't really think that it's, I, I have to agree with Andy. It's sort of like out of our lane, but it doesn't mean that we can't lobby for that. And I honestly, from what I'm hearing, the chatter that I'm hearing from my, my family that are in healthcare, that this may be forthcoming anyway.
I think to strike a balance between what Lisa is saying and Andy is saying is that on, on the superintendent's next communication, we could say as a reminder to families, our playgrounds are closed, our fields are closed, and, and they are not open to the public during this time. I think that's doing our part. And I think to Cynthia's point, we, we can discuss this further in a week because think about where we were a week ago versus where we are going to be in a week. But I think that's, I think that would be doing our part.
Dawn?
My concern is that a week is too late, that the numbers jumped from 256 to 328 today. That's a 28% increase. Our mandate is education. And we can't get back to the business of education and move forward with the next three months of curriculum until this is over. So to the extent that social distancing and, and, and order would help, I, I think I would be in favor of that in conjunction with the other committees and, and groups in this town, like the Board of Health and like the Select. I would ask them to vote in the same manner.
I'm just wondering whether this is something that, like, Dawn just brought up a really good point, that maybe we could discuss this with the other boards? I don't know if there's a way for us to even, you know, coordinate like a tri-board meeting, but I feel like having a united discussion on this as a town would be helpful. Just a thought.
Happy to reach out to Mark Hermonian and have the conversation and share the concern of the committee if that would be helpful.
Lisa, then Brad.
Sorry, I was having trouble unmuting. I think I was pressing the wrong thing. Um, I mean, I think if we're, if we're not going to pass something tonight, I don't, I'm not sure there's much point. I think that, you know, as Dawn was saying, I think a week from now, that's really not going to matter one way or another. I think, you know, it's, things will have taken off by then and we'll either be sheltering in place or we won't. I don't think this is outside our purview. I mean, as individual citizens, it's not outside of our purview. I don't, you know, school committees pass resolutions all the time. It's obviously non-binding. It's just one more way to put pressure on, it's just one way of advocating. It's simply a way, another way available to us of advocating for something that affects all of us. And, you know, I think that we're in a unique position because we're, you know, elected public officials and because we're at the school level, we're in a different position than other folks. And, you know, I've read that there are more and more state and local officials putting pressure on the governor, and I for one would just like to add our voice to that. I'm under no illusions that, you know, the Holliston School Committee is going to be the tipping point for Governor Baker. I'm not saying that, but if we as a school committee take a stand, other school committees might be encouraged to take a stand or put pressure on the governor or other town boards or whatever. And that's how advocacy works. You add your voice to something that you see from your point of view is important and it either goes your way or it doesn't. But I don't think we lose anything by passing a resolution calling on the governor to issue a shelter-in-place order because from what we are seeing, the, the efforts to flatten the curve are probably not strong enough at this moment from what I'm seeing and from where I'm sitting. So that's it. I will, you know, I'm not going to, that's all I'm going to say. I'll go with whatever the majority wants, obviously.
Brad, then Ann-Louise.
Um, just so the committee does know, in my communication to the public, to the parents yesterday, I did include a, an admonition to, to, to follow social distancing. And I also said, in light of these recommendations, the Holliston Public Schools has closed all fields and public playgrounds on its grounds and urges parents to cancel all play dates and any activity where children from different households gather together. So I, I would suggest also, in addition to advocacy and how you choose to advocate here, there's another board in town that you should be communicating with, and that's the Board of Health, that, you know, that does, you know, this is a public health emergency. And the Holliston School Committee is certainly concerned about the impact of the public health emergency. emergency on its public schools. And that's understandable and is in our lane, but the expertise on how to react to a public health emergency is beyond my, is beyond my pay grade anyhow.
Cynthia? Oh, sorry, wait, hold on. Ann-Louise, then Cynthia, sorry.
Yeah, so, listen, I, I want to make sure I'm kind of clear on this. I'm very much in support of what Lisa said, asking for a shelter in place order. I don't have any objection to her resolution. I'm not sure our resolution will have much of an impact at the state level, but she's right. Maybe, you know, if our representatives hear it or other school committees, you know, it could gain some momentum. I do believe Governor Baker is evaluating all the information that he's got and will very likely move in that direction. But perhaps it's worth doing, if not for advocating at the state level, I mean, I mean, I think it could help, but it may send a very strong message to our own community. And that in and of itself could have some value. So I'm not opposed to it. I think in that, just in that light alone, I, Lisa's convinced me there's some value in it. I don't want to make any observations about whether the curve is going to flatten or not or is what we're doing now effective or not. I don't think any of us know that, quite honestly. But I would be in support of a resolution if we think it will send a strong message to this community.
Yeah, I concur, Ann-Louise and Lisa, you're, well, well said. I think you're right, we need to send a message to our own community. I know that Brad's already sent out, and thank you for that, reminding people about play dates. I also wonder whether or not Chief Cassidy, as our emergency management coordinator, can, I don't know, we're, reverse 911 out to people, you know, something to let them know? And I don't, I know that you communicate with him pretty constantly, Brad, so.
Oh, the robo-call, is the town robo-call thing.
Right, that's it, the, yeah, the reverse 911. So I didn't know whether that was also a way of communicating to them as well. But, but again, I'm not opposed to a resolution, I just didn't, I don't know.
Lisa, do you have something to read as a resolution? Do you already have it prepared? If you don't, do you want to dress one up while we vote on the tech changes?
Sorry, I was muted. I will, yes, I will write something up while we vote. I do not have anything prepared.
Okay, Brad, let's move on to the vote to accept the changes with tech, please. Brad, you're muted.
Thank you, excuse me. We have two, what I would consider to be housekeeping issues and then the next two agenda items. Perhaps we could do those and then circle back to Lisa for the, to finalize the other discussion. The first item in front of you is the recommendation to amend the tech agreement. Tech is the, one of the educational collaboratives to which Holliston belongs. And I am a, I am the school committee's representative on their Board of Directors. The tech collaborative has an agreement, which is a contract among the communities that, that describes our relationship and all of the rules. It's basically a, the ways, the rules through which the collaborative follows. The, the collaborative was approached by the town of Midway wishing to join the collaborative. And since the membership of the collaborative is part and parcel of the collaborative agreement, the, the collaborative agreement would need to be amended. The Board of Directors unanimously approved the request of Midway to join the collaborative. It has no financial implications to Holliston other than it's one more community with which we share costs, which could actually reduce costs to us. And at the same, so the collaborative agreement was also, the changes to the collaborative agreement must also be approved by every school committee who is, that is a member of the collaborative. So included in your packet are the amendments to the tech collaborative agreement that do two things. One is to remove, to add, excuse me, to Midway to the list of communities that are part of the collaborative. And the other changes are non-substantive changes that were recommended by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to bring the collaborative agreement into alignment with the new collaborative laws in Massachusetts. So it would be my recommendation that the school committee vote to accept the amendments to the tech collaborative agreement approved by the tech Board of Directors on March 13, 2020.
Is there a motion to approve?
Moved by Cynthia.
Second by Don.
Moved by Cynthia Listevnik, seconded by Don Naborski. I'm going to do roll call vote and Joan Ashley dot booted off for connectivity, so that's why I'm not going to call her name. Ms. Ms. Hanstead?
Yeah.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Raffey, yes.
Thank you. One more item, as Lisa continues to write, as we move to warrants, we have to adjust our warrant signing procedure to accommodate our social distancing practices and virtual meeting practices. Luckily, there is a provision in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 56, called the, that's the name, the Municipal Modernization Act, that allows the school committee to designate one or two, one member and an alternative to review and approve warrants on behalf of the committee. So this, at least temporarily, would put the authority to sign warrants in the hands of one, of one member of the committee, since we physically, you know, since I, it's really going to be quite difficult to get these documents signed by a majority of the committee with our office closed and with everybody hunkered down. So it would be my recommendation that the school committee move to appoint Ann-Louise Hanstead and, as an alternative, Stacy Raffey to sign payroll and accounts payable warrants presented by the school business manager.
Do you mean the other way around, Stacy and me as an alternative?
I'm sorry, Stacy and Ann-Louise as an alternative.
Moved by Lisa.
Seconded by Andy Morton.
Okay.
Moved by Lisa Koshen, seconded by Andy Morton. Roll call vote, Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Oh, and Mrs. Raffey, yes.
Lisa, do you have that resolution?
Yeah. Let's give this a try. Don't actually know how to write a resolution, but I'm taking a crack at it. So, resolved, the Holliston School Committee, out of concern that the number of COVID-19 cases continues to increase and that social distancing does not yet appear to be consistent, calls on Governor Baker to issue a shelter in place order for the state of Massachusetts.
Andy?
Can, can we get a working definition of what shelter in place means? I think that would be helpful for me, considering this. I'm not trying to be-
Yeah, the definitions I've heard say, you know, you're not locked in your house, you can go out to perform essential tasks such as go to the grocery store, go to the pharmacy, go to medical appointments. You know, essential employees still have to go to work, that sort of thing. I mean, I think that's the sort of shelter in place definition they're using in the Bay Area, I believe. But I don't, I mean, I wouldn't define it. I'm sure that the state's going to define it however they define it. I don't necessarily, you know, have an opinion about what exactly, how exactly they define it. I assume they would do it similar to how the Bay Area has done it, though.
Okay, but a, but a working definition, that's what we're kind of assuming. Okay, thank you.
Ann-Louise?
Yeah, we can't define it, that's the problem. Every municipality that puts this in place, unless the CDC chooses to propose something for the country, it's different everywhere. I mean, with nuance, but you know what I'm saying? Like, there's, like, there's different regulations and sometimes that depends on their ability to monitor it, too. The only question I have, Lisa, is about the, the language there where you, can you just read the part about consistency? I mean, it doesn't really matter, I don't.
The Holliston School Committee, out of concern that the number of COVID-19 cases continues to increase and that social distancing does not yet appear to be consistent, calls on Governor Baker, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Don?
I would strike the social distancing does not yet appear to be consistent. We don't need it. I think the point is, we know the numbers are increasing and we want to do more because we want to get back to the business of educating our students. I, I don't think we need it. I think-
Okay, that's fine with me. I don't have, I don't have a problem with that.
I would concur, that's what I was concerned about. Because making an observation, we don't know.
My comment is much, is much more nuanced. Lisa, you're from Texas. The Massachusetts is a Commonwealth. And so when we talk about the state of-
Shut up, I hate you.
When we talk about the state of, we say the Commonwealth of.
I know, I know, okay, thank you. I am schooled, I have been schooled.
So, Lisa, can you re-
You enjoyed that too much.
Can you reread after Don's question? Can you reread the resolution with all the changes that we've had?
Yes. Resolved, the Holliston School Committee, out of concern that the number of COVID-19 cases continues to increase, calls on Governor Baker to issue a shelter in place order for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Don?
I just wanted to say that I had reached out to the Chair of the Board of Health, and she has agreed that she will also present something similar to the Board of Health, a similar resolution.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the resolution as read by, read and written by Ms. Koshen?
Go move, Ann-Louise.
Second, Don.
Moved by Ann-Louise Hanstead, seconded by Don Naborski. Roll call vote, Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
You've convinced me, yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Sorry, yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes, that passes. Thank you, Lisa. Can you forward that to both Brad and I?
Yes.
Thank you.
Lisa, can you also send it to the Chair of the Board of Health?
Sure, who is the Chair of the Board of Health?
Kylie Williams.
Can you forward me an email address?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, so we've talked it one up, but we actually haven't agreed upon it. Are we going to hold a meeting next Thursday, March 26th, just to touch base and have an update in terms of any information from the state?
I make a motion to have that.
Seconded by Andy.
Okay, moved by Don Naborski, seconded by Andy Morton. Roll call vote, Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. So Brad, can we post for next Thursday? Guys, just give me a thumbs up or thumbs down. Can we do 6:30?
Sorry, what time did he say?
6:30? Okay, it looks like Brad, everyone can do 6:30 and you and I can talk about the agenda offline.
Is this for a regular session or executive session or both?
Well, I think we need to have executive session after the conversation that the Budget Subcommittee has, right?
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
Hopefully we can actually-
Start off with executive session and then finish with, honestly, I think the meeting should be an update from Brad on the situation.
Yep.
That would probably be it. Okay. And now, do we have to approve warrants?
No.
Oh, good, I find.
Keith will have those, we'll let you know when they're ready for signature.
Okay.
I think alls we need is a motion to adjourn and a roll call vote for that motion.
All right, move to adjourn. I move. Moved by Don.
Seconded by Joan.
Seconded by Joan. Roll call vote, Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes, it is 8:51, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for your patience. Stay safe, practice social distancing, and we will see you next week. Good night, everyone.